Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Tonight, we will, in addition to our typical liaison reports and comments, hear and entertain any public comment, receive the town manager's report. We have an important topic tonight, that being to, particularly important topic tonight, that being the appointment of town council. We have a hearing at 7:30 to discuss the proposal for a four-way stop sign. We have a set of appointments from the volunteer appointment subcommittee, which we'll hear at about eight o'clock. And we'll then chat about planning for Board of Selectmen appointed boards committees and commissions workshop at 8:30. And finally, the board will speak to any and all input that it has on the subject of the charter committee revisions, which I and Bob will attend formally with the charter committee on June 30th. And then we'll approve minutes and then break into executive session to deal with topics related to collective bargaining and the purchase exchange or sale of real property. With that, I will open it up for liaison reports from my colleagues. Mr. Halsey, anything to that report?
Well, I actually, due to travel, have not really visited since I was here last. However, I do have some report from recreation. I know I've been in touch with several of the members as well as the staff person, John Feuto. I know that there's a, I think, a really notable project that is getting done down at the Morton baseball field where the high school plays. The, that has been a source of safety concern for a long time. It's the benches relative, you know, locations.
Sure.
And as it turns out, those benches are really kind of, I think they're now well over 20 years old and have really outlived their useful life. So to that end, there was a small amount of available money to the recreation department and not quite enough to really do the job right and get them moved. And a partnership was offered through the Reading Bay Ruth to help offset the difference and make a gift to the town. So I think it's notable to, you know, to mention that that's going on, you know, and will be happening sometime over the course of the summer. So there'll be a, not only, you know, you know, a nice partnership between public and private, but also, I think, a real safety concern that's being addressed down there. Additionally, I'll be visiting with Bob to the Board of Health at the end of the month, on the 30th, to discuss some turnover that's happened there. And that's pretty much my report for right now.
Thank you, Joe. Dan?
The volunteer appointment subcommittee met just before our meeting tonight and made several additional recommendations that the board will be taking up later. That's all I have.
Good. Thank you. Kevin?
Actually, I met tonight with the Board of Cemetery Trustees. As everybody is well aware of, the need for a garage is still at the present. They wanted to make sure that that got conveyed. The talk was that they were hoping to do a building down at Forest Glen Cemetery is, seems to be the, they have a location down there that would be ideal for garage space because there is some ledge space over there that wouldn't be used for burial means and would be suitable for garage means. So it seems like they, they are, right now, just, I think, looking for guidance direction more than anything else. Failing of being in limbo with where their space, space needs is. It sounds, from, from talking to them briefly, that their garage over there is, in fact, in need of a significant amount of repair because of the condition that it's in, also the size of it in comparison to the equipment that they have now is insufficient. And it seems to be time sensitive every morning in order to try to work their way around it. So I told them I would make sure that that got conveyed to the rest of the board. They also did state that they got a, the state grant match of 7,500 for the Civil War monuments in order to, to repair those monuments. That was, I think, the max amount that they were able to get. So they did raise 7,500. They did get the state to match that 7,500 as well.
Do you know if that covers just repairs or does it cover the little brass emblems that go on?
No, they're going to do the repairs. Virginia Blodgett is heading that up.
Restoration of the damaged stones.
I see. Yeah.
I think there's 15 markers in there that are, to extend damage. There's also three or four that do not have a marker which Frankie, as a veteran agent is getting, and the town is going to install them.
All eyes are on the bill in a matter of.
Yeah, exactly.
Cemetery garage.
And Marcy and I actually were on the tour about a month or so ago as well, too. We do, we did see some of those, those grays and some of them are tough shape.
Yeah, Virginia did a walking tour and it was terrific.
Yeah, it was.
Really did a terrific job.
Yeah.
Highly recommended if anybody gets an opportunity to go on another one.
I think there's one coming up, November, she say? October or November, just, just to plug it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Marcy?
So the, the library building committee did come before CPDC yesterday and did get approval to move ahead on the current plan, which now does have separate entrances and exits for the library and using the existing curb cuts. So you'll come in, go back around and come out, and then you'll go through across the front where, and they'll be picking up some additional parking spaces in the front as well. So that it, it solves some of the issues and concerns that were raised. And no one's fully happy, so it's somewhere in the middle.
Right.
Except, I guess, the chief, the chiefs, I believe, are satisfied with what we got, right?
Chiefs are always happy.
Excellent. The other thing is the zoning advisory committee did have a public forum, I think it was just last week, had about 20 folks there, 25 folks there, including some folks who had not attended in the past, which was great. We covered signs, non-conforming, and parking at it. Although I will tell you that we pushed people off on the parking because it was really the residential and, you know, the parking that goes with businesses as opposed to that larger parking issue, which the Board of Selectmen is going to have to address at some point. So we know that there's going to be some, some work on that later. The other thing, I did meet with the Commissioners of Trust Funds, it was also last week, and things are going well there. So there were, there are some additional funds for T-DAP vaccines that they've started using. I think they have the, they have that advertised out, as well as the Reading Rapid Response or that Reading, there's some additional services that we've contracted for where if someone needs to have a ride to an appointment, but they also need someone to kind of be with them because they're.
Sure.
They can, they can actually get that sort of help advocate to go with them.
And that's provided through?
It's provided through, you would go to Elder Services to, to make arrangements for that, you know, if you qualify. That's, that's about it for me.
I, too, sat in on the CPDC meeting last night. It was good to see that a solution, while a compromise, was discovered, I guess, that addressed the safety and access issues, got a little bit of bonus parking in the process, and didn't materially change the flow of traffic, at least as far as the curb cuts are concerned. Bob and I and Mark Docser, Chair of Finance Committee, sat in and interviewed two candidates last night for full-time positions on the Finance Committee. There are three openings, three full-time openings, and one fulfillment of a, of a term already in, in motion, I guess, or already in action. And two candidates were there last night. One of the incumbents also re-upped. So all three of those positions will occupy the full-time role. And the only remaining opening is the one-year assignment, which will put another notice out to those that weren't able to attend tomorrow, last night, and ask them if they're interested in the, the one-year term. Additionally, we welcome the two members of Bylaw Committee who both re-upped. So we're back at full strength on both committees, so. Very good.
Who was appointed?
You were going to ask me. From Bylaw Committee, it was Jeff Struble and Jeepers.
Paul Sylvester.
Thank you, Paul Sylvester.
How about Finn Kung?
Oh, Jeepers.
Mark Moll, they're two people who have not.
Yeah, two brand, and very impressive.
Moll?
M-O-L-L.
Okay.
And her name was Anna.
Forget the woman's. She was, she's new to Reading about a year ago, a year and a couple of months.
Landry?
Yeah, last.
Landry, that's it, yeah.
Thank you.
You have a good memory.
Oh, and, and Landry.
Yes, Ann Johnson, Landry.
Ann Johnson.
Thank you. So Mark is a six-year resident, but he's got a background in private equity and is now working in a Treasury capacity in finance, really bright, energetic. And Ann Johnson is an attorney in the State House, understands kind of how the gears move at the next couple of levels up. Very interested in getting involved. She's new to Reading, been here a year, but very interested in getting involved. I can't tell you how, how nice it is to see people that want to spend some of their, you know, the few hours we have to ourselves and try to give back a little bit to the community. It's so nice.
Literally, it's great.
Are there any comments from the public tonight?
He said hello.
Okay, very good. Bob, do you want to take us?
No, my position.
Take us through the town managers?
Just a couple of things. I sent you a memo last week, which just explains tonight, but a couple more vacancies that have been recent. Conservation has two vacancies and there's been no applications for it. So they're hoping to fill that because they will have some quorum issues over the summer if they have two empty seats, they think. And Charlie Adams intends to resign from CPDC. He announced that last night. It's, it's been in the works for a little while. As soon as he gets his resignation to Laura, we can post the position, but it's going to happen.
Should we still go ahead with his appointment through the end of June?
Excuse me?
I mean, his appointment?
Um, I don't even know. I don't think his term was up June 30th, so he must have a partial term to fill.
He's on the point.
He's not yet because he hasn't officially resigned. He announced he was going to resign on TV last night, but, yeah, you know, and we'll, as soon as he announces it and gives it to Laura, we can start advertising and accepting resumes. That's, that's another important vacancy to fill for, certainly for quorum reasons. I think, based on Kevin's remarks, and we've been talking about this internally, we'll bring DPW back in sometime during the summer and talk about the site again, just to remind the board you last heard from them, I'm going to say March, I don't remember exactly. I have not heard back from that consultant who owed us a little bit of follow-up. DPW may have it, I may not have seen it, I'll follow up on that. But the best solution to that is to have a full discussion, not to just have a couple of remarks here and there. So we'll have, we'll have them all in. And I think that's all. Got a lot to do tonight.
Okay. With that? We have a discussion on town council, an appointment of town council. Bob, do you have a vehicle that you'd propose to use this and just make it a roundtable?
I suggest you have a discussion. I mean, there's, there's three firms that were interviewed. I'll just shorthand their name, Miyares, Deutscher, and Kopplmann. So have any discussion you'd like. You know, the board asked me questions over the last week, some of you, and, you know, we found some references and resources for some of you to contact. I hope you were all able to follow up on that.
Just speaking for myself, I spoke to two individuals on behalf of some of the candidates, and it was interesting. I mean, it certainly rounded out my view of the vignette I had, both from the hard copy and from listening to their formal presentations here before us. Kevin, your thoughts?
I actually was able to hear back from one of the, one of the two folks. I reached out to Michael Harried, Board of Selectman member out of Weston. And Weston is, law firm is, yeah, Kopplmann, Page. Just to talk with him briefly, actually just heard back from today. I did not hear back from the second person that I spoke with. He had some good comments in general, was very happy in regards to their council. You know, I did bring up some things about land use and zoning to, to them specifically. We know that from this score, that was on, on the lower side from what their, their comfort level was. These scores were self-assessment, right?
Yes.
If I call correctly the.
If you're looking at the matrix, yes, that's self-assessment.
Yeah, okay. So they actually did say that, I think they, they've used special counsel before for things like land court issues that have come up. Response time requests, they said they are, do a good job in regards to that, but are not perfect. But they're overall very happy with that. They, I talked to them a little bit about the size, because that, I think, was the largest firm of the three candidates. So I talked to them a little bit about the size in general, and he actually said that they, they liked the size in general. They, they thought that because they do have a lot more folks unemployed with them, that it's easier to get some, some answers from them. They also said that they've used in four where they've worked with so many different other towns, that somebody has already fixed the wheel, so to speak, in regard to some of the issues that they've run into. And they were able to work with them on, say, you know, you already have an answer for a need that we have, you know. So it was a kind of an amicable relationship in regards to that, and he cited the size of them was part of that, that reasoning. So I thought, found that was an interesting look on, on the tape.
Which attorney of those in Weston was covering?
It's Lauren Goldberg.
It's also the same.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's, that's the only person I had spoke with in regard, in regards to any of the three firms.
Thank you. Marcy, can you come in?
Yeah, so I, I actually had someone contact me today who is from, who uses George Williams and all the others. So they were very favorable in terms of, you know, using them. They said they've, they've been very happy with them. They've been their town council, I guess, for 12 years, so they've had a pretty long run with them. It sounds like they've had a lot of need with them in terms of some litigation and things that they've had, that maybe we don't have that same kind of need here. But that's, that's really all I had. In terms of just general overall comments, with Kopplmann and Page, I am concerned about the lack of experience, but they tend to be the least experienced of any of the folks that we saw. And also the fact that we don't have that land use. I don't think we're going to want to go out and get special counsel every time we have land use, because I, my impression is that's the reason we do have stuff go to court. So I think we need a town council that gets pretty strong on that personally. So, you know, that's, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Just, just speaking for myself, I was contacted by an individual yesterday who serves in the town government in Wilmington, also uses Deutsch Williams, spoke highly of them. Principally, the value that was in addressing some, ultimately which became a super fund site in Wilmington, to which there was a fair amount of litigation. So I could easily see why that would be an attractive choice for them. I do think it's a different, in their case, it does appear to be a different level of service. Their billings, as represented to me, were several times what Reading's would have been historically. So it just, to one extent, it felt like it was exactly what they needed, but maybe not the footprint that we would need. I'd also say that, just listening to, reflecting back on the meeting when all three candidates came before us, as I think about our needs, and I'll, I'll put it back in medical terms, which I think in one of the, one of the attendees, I think it was, Durensis.
Yeah.
Did the same thing.
Yeah.
My belief is we probably need a generalist, that what I really want is the effective of my general practitioner who can address 80% of what I need, because it's ordinary and customary. And if you have a litigation issue or you have a point problem, what you really want is a subject matter expert or a legal expert on that, that vertical, to go at the problem hard. And that's where your generalists can't really add value. So I see this as really a town council, but expect that we're going to have to bring a specialist in every now and then when something crops up. And that caused me to look at the three candidates a little bit differently than when they walked in the room. I see strengths among each of them. I think I'm, I'm leaning in the favor of a generalist, so. Dan?
Yeah, I, let me, let me try to frame the discussion a little bit. I sort of wrote down my arguments for, arguments against each one, some general comments if the board wants to indulge me here. In terms of Miyares and Harrington, they're a small firm, the smallest of the three. The thing I liked about the ratio was there were seven lawyers for five towns. I think all the other firms had the inverse ratio.
Exactly, yeah.
Ray would be our principal, will contact with Tom Harrington as backup. They have very strong experience in areas such as building construction, water management, client cases before DEP, none of which perhaps are particular to Reading.
Conservation also.
Conservation, yes. Thank you.
Occasionally come.
The law firm does encourage their employees to participate in town boards in their own towns, which I thought was a plus. And they were ver, the thing that struck me about them in the very first meeting on the subcommittee, when Ray started talking, it's as if he had been living in our back pocket for six months. He knew Reading. He knew our issues. He really brought that out in, in what he said to the group, I thought. They have a very, as I said, strong town government culture. They have no conflicts of interest, which is important, I think. They are not currently and have pledged not to represent any adjacent towns to Reading. So if we were ever a kerfuffle with them on some legal issue, that would, we would not have to seek special counsel as a defendant. Arguments against, they are a small law firm, although not as small as a small firm we had before. I think that's, that's the one negative. Deutsch Williams, very strong performance. They're a medium-sized law firm, 33 lawyers, several dozen towns are currently served. Paul Durensis spectacularly experienced, without a doubt, principal contact. Kim Salant, excellent litigator as his backup. Attorney Durensis has contacts on Beacon Hill, could come in handy at times. They have the best depth of experience in municipal law and litigation of all four, based on their self-evaluations. Strong experience with land use zoning, economic development agreements, and road and street development. Arguments against Deutsch Williams, they're the highest cost structure by far of the four. They do represent many towns, although they appear, by the numbers to be stretched, that doesn't appear from the comments we've gotten, to be a practical problem. And I did hear from two selectmen, one in Wilmington and I think one in Canton, singing their praises about how great they had been as council. So the ratio may not be a factor there, they're just extraordinarily well organized. Their school expert, Brian Magna, was not named as a team member, which concerned me a bit, and they could, we could have a conflict of interest in any events with Wilmington. Finally, Kopplmann and Page, the largest law firm of the three, much experience. We did have Ted Cohen once worked for Kopplmann and Page at one of our town councils back in the 80s and 90s. Lauren, Mark, and Darren are our three, team of three. Darren has the school experience. They offered free seminars to town employees, which was a plus. They have the lowest cost structure of the four firms and very extensive experience with school issues, underage drinking, et cetera. The arguments against Kopplmann, very many towns currently represented there, but we couldn't, I couldn't really discern their lawyer-to-town ratio from the proposal. Their team leader seemed relatively inexperienced by herself ratings, which concerned me. And there is a lack of teams, as has been pointed out, lack of team experience in crucial areas such as zoning and land use and possible conflict of interest with them at Reading. On balance, having looked at all this data and reflected on the various meetings, I'm going to cast my vote for Miyares.
We'll, we'll get to voting here in a minute. I just want to get a roundtable here.
But I'll, that's where I'm leading right now.
John?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to apologize to the four of you. I was traveling and unable to be present and really unable to actually even dial in in an effective way. And so instead, I did my homework a little different way. Of course, I had the same kind of printed material that all of you folks had, but I watched the proceedings between the firms that were here presenting and the four of you for the third time this afternoon. I, you know, I felt like I needed to get a sense of that. And, and I, I came away really seeing that there were, I, I kind of started my own process of color coding and, and, you know, and reducing four to two is essentially where I started. Once I went through it the second time, I really felt like there was two firms that were jumping out at me. I did hear from, I think probably the same one, the same two select, two selectmen that you, many of you heard from. I heard from the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Canton and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Wilmington. Both of them highly extolling Deutsch. Two things were interesting. I, I listened more than I questioned. They, they both were very anxious to talk to me, and I'm sure they were to all of you as well. One of the things I heard that I really liked about their comments were, and it was, was reiterated by lead counsel from Deutsch, that he's a 24/7 guy. He said that in his remarks. Both of these selectmen indicated that that is really true and that they had both exercised that 24/7 privilege. But it kind of took me to the next thing that I really felt like I heard from both of them, and I really felt like I heard from the presentation of Deutsch, and that is, these, they're litigators.
At their core.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it strikes me that things get litigated when they get involved. Now, you know, there was certainly a disclaimer of that, that, you know, they weren't litigating to litigate, and I believe that, you know, I take them at their, at their word. But it struck me that if we found ourselves in the need of a litigator, I know exactly who I want for special counsel. And, you know, I saw that person, I think, at Deutsch. However, when I listened to the second firm that I thought really fit the criteria that I would look for was Miyares, I did have the sense that I was sitting with somebody that actually already knew us and was already very comfortable with us. I think about the fact that as a town meeting member, prior to being on the Board of Selectmen, I was always interested at town meeting to hear from counsel on things. And not that I question the gentleman from Deutsch, I mean, he has gone to more meetings than anybody in the state. He does have five towns that he needs to, and he has quite a resume. And I, and I, and I, and I say that not, you know, you know, in a respectful way. He clearly does have powerful resume. But the fact that he's got to keep up with five towns concerns me.
And he's on Board of Selectmen?
And he is, yeah. And he is a member of the Board of Selectmen in his own town. He does represent Wilmington. That, you know, that on its own, I guess, isn't a disqualifier, but it opens the question. I mean, what hap, I mean, we have a business relationship with Wilmington, and it just leaves me, you know, wondering whether or not that would be a great fit. I kind of then find my way back to Miyares and, and I just see some things here that made me feel a little more, a little more comfortable with the approach. I mean, I see two really good firms. I see us potentially doing business with both of them.
Yeah.
I felt that the, that Miyares, there were several things about that presentation that really run home with me, and some of them Dan has highlighted. But, you know, I made myself some notes here. That volunteerism that they require is not a small thing, in my opinion. The fact that every lawyer there serves on a local town board or committee is not small, in my opinion. The other thing that struck me, interestingly, is that one of the towns that our, that our guy would, you know, the guy that who proposes, Raymond, I think his name was, is Hopington. Now, I happen to know that town really well, just because I spent a lot of time there, because I have, you know, a daughter and three grandchildren there, and, you know, my daughter, no surprise, is, you know, an activist in town. And I find that town, in many ways, very similar to ours. I mean, it's in a different location and it has some different issues, but there's a lot of things that are similar. So that, I was kind of attracted, frankly, to the fact that that's one of the towns he covers, and I know that they have certain similar issues that continue to surface as I get those reports. The no neighboring towns was, was a big item for me. The no neighboring towns was, was a big item for me. I, I, I do think that that's important. I would, having said all of that, I, you know, it sounds like I'm leaning in, there's clearly to me just two choices for me. And I'm leaning towards one of them, you know, as town counsel. And I'm leaning towards wanting to maintain a relationship with the other one in the event that, you know, we meet somebody. I, I really, you know, that's kind of the way I look at, that's my evaluation, having not been in the room, but having tried to do as much homework as possible after the fact.
One other point on the Myeris, I, I, being the member on the zoning advisory committee, I was quite gratified to hear him say he can't wait to get into the zoning bylaw. So we actually need someone to jump into that.
To amplify what you said, John, one of the things about Myeris and Harrington that came across very strongly was the, is a certain style or manner of presentation that's very disarming. And as you think about presentation, it's one thing to be in front of us, it's another thing to be in front of town meeting and describing to laypeople who may have joined that evening or maybe before and walk through a thorny issue in a logical way. There's a certain aspect of that style that's advantageous. In some ca- in some ways, it's almost a little too casual. But to a layperson, it's a great way to kind of break the ice and explain a legal topic without the formality of, you know, Commonwealth Massachusetts regs fifty-two-point-four, et cetera.
I, I think to that point, you know, that style within the town meeting is going to be more embracing of the town meeting members. They're going to not feel intimidated to ask any question of a person like that. That, I was struck with that. I didn't mention that. But yeah, I, I really echo what you're saying there. And it doesn't detract from the style of the other person. The other person is very professional. That's a great front. It's clear. And, you know, the, the things I heard from the other two selectmen from two separate towns reiterated how, how well-run they are and how professional they are. However, it drove me to a belief that both of those towns had a great need for litigation, and it was a great match for them. Not, not so sure for town council, but that's a great match for us.
I guess what I'll do is a quick show of hands. I'll just name the firm and, raise your hand if you're in support. Copelman and Page. None shown. Deutsch Williams. None shown. Myeris and Harrington. Oh, five. Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Shall we fill in this rate number, Bob? Is that appropriate at this point?
I don't think you need to.
So one question I've got is, do we have an opportunity to negotiate with them for a flat rate, similar to what we had before? I believe they are one of the ones that indicated that they would be open to that.
That's why you can skip that part and just say for a term expiring.
With the board of selectmen, appoint the firm of Myeris and Harrington as town counsel for a term expiring June thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to echo my comrades, sorry about that. My confederates. My confederates' comments about Deutsch Williams and their litigation prowess. I would love to have them on as special counsel if we have a particularly thorny litigation issue that this firm can't handle as well. So I hope that message can get conveyed to them that we, and really, all three did a great job in front of us, so.
I guess the other point is, just as we're transitioning here, this is a one-year appointment, so that if something unforeseen happens or circumstances fall the firm that, or us, that we can anticipate, you have a means to recover in a year. It's not, it's not a longer term.
Right.
All those in favor? Sorry, Bob.
I, I just want to say, not all the firms that, that applied made this cut. And I spoke to one of them who didn't even get to the last three, and he was most accommodating for a future relationship. So I think that's true of any law firm. They understand you're making a decision for now, things change.
I don't think they take it personally.
Exactly, exactly.
It's job interview.
All those in favor of the motion? Five zero?
Right.
Great. Moving on, we have a hearing for a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Sunnyside and Fairview. In your packets tonight are a series of recent emails. They didn't come out on electronically, they're just here tonight. I've got a, I think, eleven responses to an email from Mr. Thomas Dolan. So that's been a, the only thread I have electronically, but there are a number here.
We, we received a number today. And actually, I received a phone call as I was walking into a meeting from another neighbor. So all but the caller in your packet tonight.
Mr. Dolan here tonight?
He couldn't be present. Last minute thing came up.
Yeah, he said this morning he would try to get here, but something came up today at the last minute after he's been hoping for this for quite some time.
Should we table this till?
I think the, the chief is here. You know, we can have the discussion. And then if you feel obliged to have some interest in this, you can certainly invite him back and leave the hearing.
We've advertised the public hearings.
We've already advertised it, so you can continue it.
So I'd be in favor of continuing the hearing only because it's been this long.
Well, do you want to have any discussion tonight about it?
Yes.
About the merits?
Okay.
Continuing with the hearing?
Do you want to continue it?
Only because Mr. Dolan is not able to attend. And he's the guy that's been.
He's the person who started the process, correct?
Can we discuss it and then decide if we're going to continue or not?
Yeah, let's hit those merits.
Let's, let's do that before we decide whether we're going to continue it. Okay.
Any comments?
I, I will make a comment. So I go through that intersection very often. It's part of my regular route. That intersection is, actually recently had a bunch of bushes that were cut down. So there's much less reason, I think, to, to have this. And the times that I've been through there, I haven't observed a lot of pedestrians. I have rarely encountered another car there. I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything that, that would drive a need for a four-way stop there. There's currently a two-way stop. The other street, I, I don't see cars speeding on it when there are cars on it. So I'm, it seems to me that it's a little bit of overkill. And especially given some of the information we had from the chief, where they, you know, they've gone out and they've observed and they haven't seen anything that indicates there's a, a good reason for it.
No, I saw that as well. There's certainly none of the data that's been collected that shows tickets or speeding or any of the data collected.
Now, now, I haven't had a chance to look through the, you know, the messages that are here in the packet, so.
I, I can give you a characterization. Ray Conwell also called tonight, and he's not in the packet. And again, only speaking specifically of people that have emailed me or talked to me, everyone's opposed to a stop sign except for the person who requested it to be issued. I don't know where they live. I don't know that there's not a hundred other people in favor of it, but those are the ones I've heard from.
I, I will say also that I, in my neighborhood, there was a stop sign that was put up. And I, and I, when I joined town meeting, I had people say, why did they put that stop sign up? I can't believe they did it. It doesn't make any sense. We didn't want it. And because they didn't come and speak, it got put up anyway, even though the track and study said there's no need for it. I, I just don't, don't think that's a good use of our time and funds for it.
Well, I have a comment, John. I, um.
Yes, Mr. Old.
I also, I've been seeing these emails for some time now. And so, you know, when I see these emails, what I tend to do is get in the car, because, you know, I have nothing else to do anyway. So I just, I get in the car and I, and, and I went through. And I've been, I've been to this place several times. And I, my experience has been the same as, as yours, Marcy. I, and I'm not saying that, that this man doesn't have a, you know, a valid, you know, reason to want to do this. It's just that my own experience, when I visited there, which was three different times, that, you know, like on a weekend and in the morning and then in the afternoon, it was kind of quiet. I mean, it wasn't, I didn't really see a lot of activity. That's not to say that there's not times when it is, because I was just there randomly. So, but what I saw was really what you saw.
Actually, John, if I could interrupt, Mr. Enzinger reminds me that we haven't read the posting yet.
Yes, this, this was read five minutes ago, for the record. To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the board of selectmen of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, at seven thirty P. M. And the selectmen's meeting on sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on a proposed four-way stop at Sunnyside Fairview Avenue. Copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the town manager's office. Sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from seven thirty A. M. to five thirty P. M. Tuesday from seven thirty A. M. to seven P. M. And as attached to the hearing notice on the website at www writtingma.gov, all interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to six P. M. on June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, the hearing is now officially open.
Yes.
John, did you have any other comments?
No.
Was it? Kevin?
Yeah, it, it seems, I read through the, the emails that, that we had received. It definitely seemed like there was more people against it than for it, against putting the stop sign in, that is, than for having it in there. And yeah, being down in that area as well, it, it didn't, I kind of saw it the way that John had viewed it, we're pretty quiet over there. But again, I'm, I don't live there, so I don't observe it that much. It just seemed like it was, wasn't a necessary location for a stop sign.
My own read, after reading the comments in tonight's packet and reading Mr. Dolan's notice, he's obviously concerned about the welfare of his children and his children's friends, and that's a natural reaction of any parent.
Sure.
And I don't think he's acting out of anything other than that. I can't, obviously, there's a diversity of opinion. And my only reason to suggest that we would do anything but take a position tonight is driven by the activity over the several, last several months to wait for him to be present. On the, on the, on the other side, I suspect the outcome has already been determined. So I have no objection to closing it, but I just make the point that we're prob- this likely is probably going to come back.
Well, don't we have other comment?
I would just ask that you let the chief describe sort of the legal situation, I suppose you'd say, a practical situation.
Just a bright, pause, I want to send this to the access. These are, thank you, full-page copies of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Of course, I haven't paraphrased in the email, but I wanted to be able to look at the entire sheet. And the part on the front here talks about multiway stops. Anybody else want to copy this?
I don't stop anywhere.
You don't stop anywhere.
Can't see him.
Right above. So I think.
He only stops at the cemetery.
As long as he's able to keep on.
We need a forward, Kevin.
So I, I think it's important to understand that the manual on uniform traffic control devices is basically the governing oversight for all traffic control devices. And it's a national manual. And, you know, we're, we're kind of obligated to follow it. And yeah, they're put down as guidance. However, you want to, you want to pay attention to their guidance. You know, our chapter ninety and state regulations are also guided along this. Commonwealth of Massachusetts has adopted it. You know, our chapter ninety money sometimes is associated with being in compliance with some of these things. It's, it's an area that nine years ago, I had a lot of conversations with a lot of boards of selectmen about four-way stop signs and stop signs in general. And you are the road commissioners, and it's strictly our decision. And I sat here with a big smile on my face and told, have told selectmen over and over, it's your decision, and feel free to do whatever you think is best. But I think my obligation is to make sure that you have the right information to make those decisions. If, if guidance is not, you know, followed, if you don't have some kind of defined path, you'll be putting stop signs at every intersection in town. That, that's, that's one of the underlying issues. But when you read about the multiway stop sign from the MUTCD, they talk about some of the criteria that they would like you to consider in doing this. First of all, you want to have an engineering study for multiway stops. They don't take them lightly at, at, at the federal or state level. And if you look at some of the, some of the criteria that they, they talk about, they, it would, a multiway stop would be justified where you want to, you're expecting to put signals in and you want to temporarily put a four-way stop in while you're waiting for the signals to be installed. You know, major intersection, you're going to be putting, you're going to signalize them. Five or more crashes in a twelve-month period. We have not had anywhere near that amount of crashes at Fairview and Sunnyside. I think in the last four or five years, I think we've had two or three, I believe. I believe that was in the packet that was sent out. One recently, you know, and there were some sightline issues, snow on the, snow on the corner in a, in a bush. We're aware of the bush issue. But nowhere near, you know, that, that amount of crashes. And then it talks about minimum volumes, volumes, three hundred vehicles for any, per hour for any eight-hour, any, for any eight hours on an average day is one of the criteria. It, it talks about vehicular pedestrian bicycle volume entering the intersection. It averages at least two hundred units per hour for the same eight hours, with an average delay to the minor street for thirty seconds, you know. They're talking about large quantities, large volumes of traffic for, for a multiway stop. You know, the bigger, you know, the kind of the big point is, they don't take them lightly. You know, this, this is kind of a big deal. And granted, you know, I, I understand there's one just down the street at Melbourne and Sunnyside, but that was before my time. And I can't comment on what occurred prior to me becoming chief, but I can only deal with what happened after April two thousand five. Not that I know that date, but. And, you know, and yeah, there are some other options to take into account down there. But I think, you know, they, they are intended to go in conjunction with the upper portion of that paragraph. So the other thing that I would mention is, is that recently, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, in conjunction with the safety school program over the last, I think it was about two, two and a half years ago, came in and did a pretty extensive study in the area. And they actually redid the sidewalk along Sunnyside Avenue and all the way to this intersection. They put up new signage, sidewalks, they did Washington Street between Prescott and Wuburn, and redid the intersection of the Temple Street to enhance pedestrian traffic to the middle school and potentially also up to the elementary school. When they did that study, if there was any, believe me, they would not have gone past this if there was, if they felt any need for it to change the traffic flow or the stop sign configuration at that intersection. They would not have done that work without telling us that we needed to change that. And that never was part of the conversation whatsoever. So, you know, we talked about it at Park and Traffic Transportation Task Force, it's staff-level review, the town engineer, police departments represented, the department of public works director, you know, the town planner, the town manager, and other, others as unnecessary, as needed basis. But, you know, we sat and reviewed this. We went out, the safety officer went out, we did, we did, October of last year, ten different directed enforcements out there, where we had officers monitoring the area, checking average speeds, looking for violations. The average speed was in the, in the low to mid twenties, which is, you know, what you kind of find on a lot of these side streets.
Chief, is that speed limit thirty miles an hour there?
Yes. Yeah. And no violations were noted by any of the officers. So, you know, one of the things that we can do going forward, we've got our new speed boards that we were able to purchase through the winter. They're now in action. You may have seen them. They've got messages on them. They also collect data, though, and record back to us. So as another tool, you know, we'd be happy to at some point in the near future, after we move them from their current locations, is to put one in that area. Again, monitor the speed. We can get counts on traffic, vehicular traffic and things like that. It's a lot easier than the old counters. We had to set up the tubes in the road and everything like this. Gives us a nice, a nice picture of what's going on in the neighborhood. And so, you know, in the future, be happy to take a look at that. The bush on the corner, it would be the southwest corner, I guess, southwest, yeah. You know, it, it is a bit of a concern. And, you know, no, no qualms there. But I think that, you know, our intention is, the, the house was recently sold on that corner. We had talked to the previous owner. We were waiting for the new owner.
Last weekend, they did a bunch of trimming back. So, like, it, it happened literally last Saturday when I was going by.
Yeah. I know we were, we were in the process of talking. It's good that the DPW usually has a conversation, because we could stake out where the town property line is, and they go in with a flail cutter. But you don't want them to come cut things down. Trust me. It's not, it's not a free site when they're done, you know. It's not, it's not high-end landscaping, trust me. So, you know, they did go and talk, I think they talked to the homeowner, and apparently they had taken some action to reduce that bush down. So, you know, that, that's my report. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. Kevin?
Chief, are there any other signage on, on either one of those streets, other than stop signs, go children slow? I, I don't recall.
Yeah, not that I can recall off the top of my head, Kevin. I know there's, there's stops on the Fairview sides, on both sides.
Yeah.
And Sunnyside is the, is the true street.
Right.
As for others, probably not. And, and actually, we've, many years ago, moved the way. As for others, probably not, and actually, we've many years ago moved away from the slow children signs. They found not to be effective.
Okay.
Quite frankly, and they end up needing to put them on every street in town, because a town like this, every street has them.
Every street has them.
Yeah. You know, so.
All right. I'm just curious.
They just have the school, like, the sign for the roots to school, there's some sign.
Does that safety sign probably down there because of the work that was done recently? Yeah.
Chief, to the extent that there's an obstruction on a private property that does impact line of sight, particularly in an intersection, what, other than a request, is no other recourse?
Not on their property.
No, we don't have a concept of sight easements in our zone.
We, I still have the scars one time from going in front of town meeting about a site triangle shortly after I became chief. Somebody thought it'd be a good idea that I approached that, and yeah, I still have the pain from that one. So, site triangles would be on an intersection with a certain triangle, and we propose to keep everything at a certain level, even on private property, certain angle on the corner, and town meetings haven't had it.
This, Marcy.
I know one of the people in here actually talks about, this is not this intersection, but they said that cars being parked very close to Prescott causes a problem, and I have actually noticed that there are many times cars parked very close there because the train stuff is there, so.
Yeah, yeah, the, and they, you know, I think, I know we looked at that before, I'll check, if there's not a twenty-foot sign, which there may be, no parking here in a corner, no, maybe we could do a twenty-foot sign. There's, you know, there's a state law about twenty feet from the intersection. We just want to push them back off the intersection a little bit, that's about the best we would want to do up there. We do have, yeah, there are a number of cars that park along there, they get down and walk down to the train station.
Any other comments from the board?
Are you going to ask for public comments?
Yeah. Any comments from the public? Yes, why don't you stand, tell us who you are?
Okay, my name is Elizabeth Erin Giesmundo, and I live at thirty-four Sunnyside, which is on the corner of Fairview and Sunnyside. Not that one, that one, yes. My husband and I have lived there with our three children for about eight years, so we've seen some different things go on. I personally have been home when two of the accidents have happened in front of my house, it's very scary, the crash sound is scary. And I believe that the major cause, and it's interesting to bring up the multiway stop application, because I believe that this intersection would meet locations where, under option C, locations where a road user after stopping cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to negotiate the intersection unless that crossing traffic is required to stop. I actually went out in front of my house tonight to take a photograph, and I know that the new homeowners have trimmed those bushes a little bit, but there was a car coming, and I did take a picture of it, I don't know if it's, if it's submittable or if anyone would like to see it, but when you stop at the stop sign, you cannot see any of the traffic that is coming from either direction of Sunnyside, if you stop at the actual stop sign. So then you pull out, and this particular car had pulled, pulled out, I don't know, can I approach anybody here?
Maybe at first, usually we get photographs, usually don't get iPads.
My first attempt is that.
I'll apologize in advance for breaking your computer.
So, so you pull to the stop sign, and you can't see the traffic on either side. Then, and I pull, I mean, I drive there every single day, because I have to cross it to get to my driveway, and I'm always very, I'm very cautious because of the two accidents that I saw. So that particular picture, he's now pulled out a second time, further into the intersection, and you still do not have a good sightline. You have to practically pull into the intersection. There's also a phone pole and a tree that would be on the left side, so this would be coming down Fairview, approaching Sunnyside, where that bush problem is.
Going in this direction?
Coming down, right, coming down that way. And that's where the accidents have happened, because people have felt that they were clear, because they couldn't see, you can see better to the left of you, but you cannot see to the right of you. And if somebody's going thirty miles an hour coming down there, they will crash into you. If you think that you're clear, you have to pull halfway to the intersection to really be certain that you're not going to be hit. And that's what I do every single day, I stop like three or four times before I cross. And we were so excited when the sidewalk project went in, because the plans called for that bush to be removed completely and completely clear sightlines. And at one of the meetings, and we talked about, because we felt that the hedge that we inherited, which is kind of on the town property line at our property, was also a hazard, that people couldn't see coming from Riverside onto Fairview. And originally, that was slated to come out as well, and they didn't remove it, and we called the town, and we said, we really think that's a problem, and it doesn't appear that they're now going to take out that hedge, and the town came and removed it, and it was fantastic. And they did rip it all out, and it was all dirt, and it was mess, but it was great, because now I feel safer that, at least for my property, people are able to see. And it is a big concern, you know, we have three small children, and they're playing out there, and the sidewalk is there, but, you know, I'm like a maniac woman out there watching the traffic, because that intersection, it is extremely dangerous. And so something did happen when the sidewalk project went in, that was supposed to all be removed. The crosswalk for children is, it crosses before you get to Fairview across Sunnyside, there is a crosswalk there and a crosswalk sign. I would never let a child cross there, because you also, just as you can't see the cars coming, you couldn't see a child who's standing on the corner there. They, they, it would be tragic. So no children ever cross on that crosswalk, because no, no parent would allow them to cross on that crosswalk unless you are standing in the middle of Fairview, and you can see Fairview, and you can see Sunnyside, then it's okay to cross with your kids. So I would never let a child go alone there at that crosswalk intersection. So with those bushes there, it is a hazard, and I believe it would meet the requirements of not being able to see oncoming traffic. And so we were delighted when Mr. Dolan, you know, we found out that Mr. Dolan had submitted this proposal, because we think it is a huge hazard, and having been witness to those two accidents for the very reason of those bushes, we were just really excited and feel that there's a really strong need. I will say that the house across the street from us has just recently sold, so those are new homeowners coming in who probably didn't even know this meeting was happening tonight on the corner. But there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and people are very cautious. But I think it meets the requirements for a four-way stop, based on that, unless those hedges are removed. And I believe, from the engineering perspective, when they did the sidewalk study, that was their recommendation for a safe intersection there, that those bushes be removed, and they were not removed.
You said, sorry, you said that you've witnessed or been privy to two accidents?
Yes.
Tonight's data chief, was there accident data?
In two thousand ten, sound right? The last one, the last one that I had, it was two thousand ten.
I'm not sure when the first one was. The last one was about two or three months ago.
Yeah, in two thousand ten.
And I don't think that snow had anything to do with that at all. The roads were dry, and it was a sightline issue.
It was the pile of snow, and in the accident report, the woman that was involved talked about the pile of snow.
Okay. And it might have been, but I think the same thing could easily happen now because of the bushes when you come down Fairview. There is one sign that went in, because it originally went directly in our front yard, which was shared the road with a bicycle sign, and that's moved now, they were kind enough to move to the end of our property, because it was really in a bad spot. And there's the crosswalk signs, you know, the crosswalk too.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I want to take her tablet home.
Oh, yeah, don't forget that.
Got to watch, watch out.
Value a little item there.
Okay, if there were no other comments on the board?
Move the Board of Selectmen, close the hearing on the proposed four-way stop at Sunnyside and Fairview Avenue.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I was in favor.
I can go ahead and make the motion, we can discuss it for, I'll do it at least for the sake of discussion. Move the Board of Selectmen amend the Town of Reading traffic rules and regulations approved on August twenty, two thousand thirteen as follows. Street to be amended, Sunnyside Avenue. Location on street, on both the northbound and southbound sides of the intersection of Fairview Avenue. Regulation, obedience to isolated stop sign pursuant to article six point one two and in accordance with MGL, chapter eighty-nine, section nine.
Any questions or comments?
Need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Second?
If there's no second, then there's no motion.
Second.
Okay. Kevin will second now, discussion?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, I have, I'm somewhat conflicted about this. I understand that, you know, you're trying to look after your children, and I get that, and I think that the original person who petitioned this feels the same way. You know, when I read these things that Chief Cormier gave us, I'm struggling to find, you know, the answer for a stop sign in these, in these suggestions. And I'm, you know, I'm somewhat bothered, I mean, the emails do stand on their own, there's, you know, quite a number of people, a handful of people who have indicated that they live in the neighborhood and feel like it doesn't fit, and I, you know, I'm a little troubled that this gentleman has spent two years trying to get in front of us.
Exactly.
And, you know, and here we are. I can't imagine that he took lightly the idea of not showing up tonight, and that concerns me a little bit, that he can't be heard. I mean, although, having said all of that, I read the things that the chief has given us, and it makes me wonder if we can in good con, personally, if in good conscience, if I'm going to look at these guidelines, I'm trying to reach for something that would help me say yes to this, and I'm, I'm struggling with that, frankly. I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud with all of you right at the moment, to be honest.
We're hearing your air, John.
Because anytime that parents come to us with a concern about their children, I think we have to listen very carefully about that, and, you know.
Just amplify your points, John. Tonight's memos in the letter cite as their, one of their principal reasons, and it's common to all three, air pollution. And what I, I'm always interested in a contrarian view, what I find interesting is that they repeat almost the same thing, and it makes me wonder, first of all.
Somebody wrote it and said, let's.
Correct. It has a common source, or at a minimum, it doesn't necessarily deal with the safety issue head-on, but it does deal with the pollution issue head-on. And I, I get the point, we want to keep traffic moving, but to me, that's secondary to the safety issue.
Well, I agree with that, I think safety trumps pollution. I mean, if we're talking about the safety of children, it's going to trump whether or not there's a little more emissions. That's the personal opinion.
Correct.
My bigger challenge is, you know, we need to rely on Chief Cormier to give us good direction as road commissioners. And I look at these, this stuff, and I'm, frankly, I'm, I'm reaching for a reason to say yes to this, and I, I'm having a hard time finding it.
Although, these are guidelines, and at the end of the day, no guideline.
I know they're not, they're not laws, but.
That's the problem, so.
The problem, as which you've mentioned, though, is, you put one there, now you've got a precedent, and now every single time somebody comes to you, you need to put up a stop sign, and pretty soon, you've got.
That's why I think the guidelines are really the problems. You know, that we, that we look at them as strong indicators, as the chief has told us that, you know. It bothers me that somebody tries for two years to get in front of us and has some kind of an emergency and can't. That, that causes me a little bit of problem, that he doesn't get to have his say. And I think you're speaking kind of on his behalf, not on his behalf, on your own behalf.
Yeah.
But I'm guessing that, you know, you guys would probably say similar things.
Doesn't on, on page, I guess it's not marked, four, four B, doesn't that, in addition, the use of yielders stop should be considered the intersection of two hundred streets or local roads where the intersection is more than three approaches, and where one or more of the following conditions exist, B is, the ability to see, see a conflicting traffic on an approach is not sufficient for a lot of the road user to stop yield in compliance with the normal right-of-way. I think the discussion tonight is, I can stop to comply, but I can't see oncoming traffic unless sight stop multiple times.
That's also echoed by five C, which I think was mentioned on page one.
Although, that's crap, this now sets a threshold. We'll take four, but five sets, trips the, trips the wire.
So is this a bush problem, or is this a sign?
There's a tree in the way, and there's a bush that compounds the, if I understand the photograph.
This sounds like a sightline problem.
It is. Under normal circumstances, this would be a problem. It's caused by the sightline, which isn't comprehended by the guidelines. I'm sensitive to setting the precedent, too. On the other hand, one of the reasons there are humans here and not just a piece of paper is, you got to interpret the results.
I would just say, with, with the trimming back, I would, I would say people should go and look at it, probably, before you, to put anything up there.
Some private property, though, right?
It is.
You'd have to be in negotiation with the.
Yeah, I have not been out there since it was trimmed back, either.
What would the board like to do? Would the board like to take a position tonight?
My suggestion, personally, I know we have to close the public hearing, I guess we've done that.
We did that. Either the table or vote, from your options.
I'm inclined to, you know, we have a citizen that's tried for two years. I mean, I don't know that he, if I was voting right now, I would vote against the stop sign, based on the criteria that I saw from the chief that gave this to us. Being sensitive to your comments and understanding them, but at the same time, I mean, there is a place as the, you know, as one of the five road commissioners that says, you know, there is probably three hundred corners in this, in this town where people feel the same way you feel about, you know, protecting their children, and, I mean, this, we could end up with a, you know, cascade of these, of these, and if you say yes to one, you have to say yes to the other, and the common denominator has to be what, you know, I mean, are there, are there multiple reasons to be found here? And, but I personally feel like I would rather withhold the vote until such time as we give this person the opportunity to have his say after two years.
So I think that would mean that we probably need to reverse the closing of the, wouldn't we have to?
No, I don't think.
Wouldn't we have to reopen the public hearings?
No.
We're not supposed to take additional comment.
Oh, I see, okay. I don't understand.
You can make that motion, reconsider.
We would either reopen it, or we would either have to reconsider, or we would have to have a new public hearing.
Bob, do we need to reconsider the vote to close the meeting in order to continue?
In order to reopen the public hearing.
In order to allow him to make comment, right?
In order to get comment, we'd have to reopen the public hearing, so.
Or a new one.
That's easy, not a big deal.
I'm open to doing that. Do we have to advertise it again and all that?
Yeah, not if you continue it.
Not if you reopen, reconsider and.
Let's try this. Move to reconsider the vote just taken to close the hearing on the stop sign at Sunnyside and Fairview.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Any discussions? Those in favor of reconsideration? Okay.
Now, the hearing is still open, so we can either continue it or whatever.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue. If you're going to continue the hearing, might I suggest that the town engineer do an engineering study to give you some real hard facts, you know, sightline distances and whatnot, as is suggested in MUTC.
I, you know, I would like that, because I think that these.
That's going to put Tom off a couple more weeks, but.
I think these suggestions are powerful, and I think they're, they're pretty overwhelming if you look at them, that says, this is probably not something that we should be approving as the road commissioner. I think that's what it's saying. And I think if we're going to continue this to the next time we meet, so that the gentleman can have his say, if that gives us time to do this to, you know, to fortify with facts one way or the other.
If the town engineer is given an opportunity to do an engineering study, now you're complying with what the guidelines recommend.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you, you're not, you're not going to be arbitrary and capricious in the future, you're setting a standard that you're going to use, and I think I've made this recommendation in the past, is if you kind of follow what they say, and if you follow that each and every time, or whenever there's a controversial question, and you have an engineering study, now you're basing it on, you know, the facts of what the engineering study shows for sightlines, and whether or not, you know, there is impediments and things, you know, and that gives you a basis for now making concrete decisions each and every time, and you can base them on what is recommended.
I personally think that simplifies the process. I mean, you standardize it, you, by doing that, you take so much subjectivity out of it.
And you'll provide some additional information that we don't have today.
That we don't have, right.
Right.
So Bob, the motion.
Do they meet on the twenty-eighth of July? Does that sound familiar?
Fifteen. I know it's the fifteen, there may be another.
Twenty-nine.
I would suggest you continue it to July twenty-ninth, just to, so I can be in touch with Tom, see what his availability is, and that gives him enough lead time, hopefully, plus if he'll do an engineering study.
if he'll do an engineering study.
Move to continue the hearing until the Board of Selectment meeting of July 29th.
And I'd say 29th at 8:00 P.M.
At 8:00 P.M.
Marcy seconds the motion. Discussion? Those in favor? Five, zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks coming out.
Jury is still up.
Thank you for your comments and your photographs. Pictures worth a thousand words.
Those were very helpful.
Yes, thank you for coming.
What was the problem last night too? It was a beautiful night. We're having interviews for-
People have summertime on their mind.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Let's see, next week, we move to, see, it's eight o'clock, we're slightly behind. We move to appointments of boards, committees, and commissions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Kevin and I have met as a subcommittee three times, including a meeting earlier this evening, where we had two, two candidates that had not been previously interviewed, Sandra Papaya and Christine Hansen. We recommended Sandra for two positions, which you'll be hearing in the motions. They'll be a little different from what's in your packet here, and Christine for one particular position. So, I'm going to go ahead and, and use the minutes to make the motions. They'll be, and just a point of note, I want to deal with historical commission last and have a little discussion about why we did that.
Are we going to sentence you to read all of that, or is there a way?
I don't mind doing that, really. And I think it's important that folks hear the names, so. Rick, move to appoint Tina Olson to the Animal Control Appeals Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2017.
You want to read them all?
Can we, can we take them all as one?
Uh, no, I think we should, well, we could.
Can we at least group, group ones that are at the ending term?
We can do the-
Is there a logical association?
Um, we can, we can, I, I'll just read them. And, and we can do a block of them and vote, you know, like we do the town meeting.
When Dan drops, then you should just say-
Like half of the page.
Keeps going.
I, I just worry I'm going to leave something out if I go by the motion here. All right. Second, move to appoint Kathleen Hackett and Demace Kawett to the Board of Appeals with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. Third, move to appoint Olive Hecht and Janet Baronian to the Board of Cemetery Trustees with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Andrew Friedman to the Board of Health with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Harry Simmons to the Board of Registars with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. And move to appoint David Williams and Ronald Dodario to the Climate Advisory Committee with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. Now, I want to also note that there was a Board of Appeals Associate membership for which there is no candidate. If there's anybody on the board that wants to make a nomination of anyone they know is interested, they have the option to do that at this point. Otherwise, we can take a vote on that section.
Okay. Any, all those in favor of the, do I have a second, first of all?
I have a second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Okay, thank you. Okay. Move to appoint Michelle Benson and Gina Snyder as associates to the Climate Advisory Committee, with terms expiring June 30th, 2015. Move to appoint Elizabeth Kleppice and Marcy West to the Commissioners of Trust Funds with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. And move to recommend, to appoint Terrence Selly to the Conservation Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. And there are two other vacancies at this point, so if there are any other motions to be made at the end of this block, the board is avail, may do that. Move to appoint Sally M. Hoyt to the Position of Constable with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Charles Adams and David Tuttle to the Community Planning Development Commission with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. And move to appoint George Katsoufis as an Associate on the Community Planning and Development Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2015.
I just want to add that you, it's proper that you reappoint Charles, even though on TV you said he's going to resign. He hasn't submitted anything in writing.
Okay.
I agree.
Do I have a second? Marcy seconds. Discussion?
Maybe I should second. Aren't you on there?
Oh, yeah, why don't you second? That's probably exciting.
Kevin usurps Marcy in this. Any discussion? For the young, all those in favor? Five, zero.
Okay. Next page, my page anyway. Move to recommend, to, move to appoint Kevin Walsh, Sandra J. Schaffer, and John Parsons to the Council on Aging with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. There'll be a change, no, actually, it's not a change. Move to appoint Margaret Kawett and Donna Schenkel to the Cultural Council with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Frances Driscoll as the Custodian of Soldier and Sailor's Graves with a term expiring June 30th, 2019. That's a five-year appointment, is allowed. Move to appoint Maria Higgins and Sheila Clark to the Economic Development Committee with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint John Russell and Sandra Papaya as Associate Members on the Economic Development Committee with terms expiring June 30th, 2015. There's one other vacancy in that Associate. So, if any motions are to be made, they may be. And move to appoint Denise Bernard to the Fall Street Fair Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. And last one in this block, move to appoint Timothy Kelly to the Housing Authority with a term expiring June 30th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Marcy will now second this. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero.
Move, on this next appointment, we did research the issue of whether a person not registered to vote in Redding may hold an appointed board position. And the answer is yes, from the town clerk. They merely need to be a resident of, of Redding and over eighteen years of age, I believe. And that, that is Kyung Yu's situation. Move to appoint Kyung Yu to the Human Relations Advisory Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Mark Sagala to the Human Relations Advisory Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2016. And the other full membership we approved tonight. Move to appoint Christine Hansen to the Human Relations Advisory Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2015. Move to appoint Camille Anthony and Sandra Papaya, that's a change, as Associate Members of the Human Relations Advisory Committee with terms expiring June 30th, 2015. Move to appoint Steven Sadwick to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to recommend, move to appoint Alyssa Scaparati to the North Suburban Plan, actually, we did that one already.
Did it last week.
That was done. Strike that. Move to appoint Adam Chase and Richard Hand to the Recreation Committee with terms expiring June 30th, 2017. And move to appoint John Winnie as an Associate Member on the Recreation Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2015. Let's stop there.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Marcy will second.
Did I, was something?
I just had a question on the, on the one that we appointed last time. Is that, is that really six thirty, sixteen? That's correct? It's a two-year as opposed to a three-year?
I believe so. Yep.
Yeah, the only other question I have is, we have three people on the Human Relations that are associates with a vacancy. Is that right?
You moved Sandra Papaya up.
Sanders, Sanders moved, take, hold on.
I thought you moved Christina up.
No, Christine Hansen is taking the full membership.
Christine is a full member. Right, I believe so.
That's why you didn't name it.
Yep, yep, yep.
Christine Hansen is the full member.
The full member, right.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero.
And this will be the last block. And we'll talk historical. Okay. Move direct, to appoint Carl McFadden to the Redding Ice Arena Authority with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint David Mancuso to the RMLD Citizen Advisory Board with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Farouk Najmi to the Town Forest Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint Kurt Habel as an Associate Member to the Town Forest Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2015. Move to appoint Will Finch to the Trails Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to appoint John Parsons as an Associate Member of the Trails Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2015. Move to appoint Eileen Bornstein to the West Street Historic District Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Move to rec, to appoint Alyssa Scaparati to the West Street Historic District Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2016. And that's it for that block.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero. Do you have one more?
Okay. The Historic Commission, as Chair, I decide I would like to see this commission, given that, based on a couple of meetings I had sat in on, I had some concerns about the way the demolition law was being interpreted, and specifically with some of the comments being made by a couple of the people, one of the persons specifically being reappointed here. Everybody but that person showed up, and we had a very, I thought, productive discussion. I learned some things, they heard my views. I think we, we got some points across to each other. And I was happy to recommend the reappointment of, and Kevin, we, we recommended the appointment of the other three. The other person, we did not take a position on because she didn't come. The board is free to nominate her tonight. The board is free to pass on it. There'll be a vacancy until such time.
Okay.
As she fills it, or someone else fills it. So, it's, it's up to the board. So, I will therefore move, and I think the minutes are pretty good about.
Could I just have a quick question?
Sure thing.
So, has this person had more than one opportunity to-
They were offered three instances to meet the vast, she was. So, I'm going to move to recommend Robert Carl Midnight to a term, some call him Carl, so I'm saying Carl, to a term on Historical Committee ending June 30th, 2017. And move to recommend Nancy to, I'm saying recommend here, it's the wrong verbiage. It's actually to-
Nominate?
Not, a point. Appoint Robert McKnight, please change that word. And move to appoint Nancy Cole and Virginia Adams to Associate Terms on the Historical Committee ending June 30th, 2015. And there is-
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero. Okay.
So, there is a vacancy there?
Yes. I promised you these, Paul.
Okay, next on the conversation tonight is the Board of Selectmen, on the work ongoing on the Charter Committee, which is in tonight's packet. At least the electronic packet.
There's one other thing, John, before that.
John?
Did we miss something?
Appointed Board's Command, Commission workshop.
Oh, yes.
There's nothing in your packet on, well, there is, I guess, pages, the last two pages of tonight.
That's right, yeah.
Want the paper copy?
Yeah.
Reading 2020.
The, if I may?
Please.
Past boards, for several years, have talked about having some sort of a board summit. I think that's B-O-R-A-R-D, not B-O-R-E-D.
Although it could turn the other way.
Although it could quickly turn. And I'll, I'll remember five or six years ago when the topic first came up, some of the ethics laws were changing, some of the open meeting laws were changing, and we had to train all the boards and committees, and they had to pass online ethics exams. So, there was actually a reason to gather them. Although the board talked about it for a couple of years, the Board of Selectmen, they never went forward and decided to hold such a meeting. I think we have another opportunity with the four groups that you formed on that Saturday retreat, because virtually every single one of these groups is going to overlap into some volunteer board or committee. And what we said on the, at the retreat was we'd next hold a public meeting in October to discuss the next steps on this. And, you know, I'll discuss with you shortly that I probably want to do a lot of work between now and October. But it seems like that's an opportunity to gather boards and committees, and sit down in, you know, perhaps a financial forum type setting, except it has nothing to do with money, or very little to do with money. Maybe more of a World Cafe type of approach. I don't think that, you know, these four groups have necessarily gotten a lot of publicity. We haven't intended to do that yet. But it seems like we should start spreading the word to specific boards and committees that are going to be involved by this. And I'll, I'll just, you know, pick one out, community partners. Basically, you look down at your appointments and look at every social service there. They're a community partner. Almost every board or committee is, is in some way a community partner for something. So, it just seemed like that was, again, presenting an opportunity to gather people, whereas we had the same, same opportunities, you know, five or so years ago to, to do that. And I know this board has, over the last few months, and perhaps even last summer, indicated a kind of a renewed interest in gathering at least the chairs, maybe the vice chairs. And that's a logistics question, because to hold a meeting and to have every board and committee come, that's a big group. Logistically, how many people are going to really make it? On the one hand, you want to be inclusive, and I'm not saying we shouldn't. On the other hand, as a practical matter, you might just ask all the boards and committees to send two people, chair, vice chair, whoever can make it. That's, that's really up to you. You can also ask them to send two, and invite them to all come if they just want to, and they post themselves. My sense from several years ago was that it's going to be difficult to get really strong attendance on a given night, or weekend, or whatever it would be. So that, but I, but on the other hand, I think it's very important that no group not be represented. So, I'd be leaning towards the, please make sure you send one or two, and then you're always all welcome.
Doesn't that seem like, I mean, isn't that kind of a no-brainer that we have two? I mean, that, you know, that you'd invite the chair, the vice chair, or their designees, and that a minimum of two need to, need to come? I mean, isn't it our job to help, help them and, and offer oversight?
And the other aspect of that, John, is sometimes I, you know, having been on Finance Committee, even as a town meeting member, some of this is mystifying, how this all, all these individual groups, I'll call them silos for no other reason, and so there's a lot of autonomy.
Because they are.
There's no other organizing principle other than something like this. So, I think having this once every eight years is probably a little too, a little too little. But doing this once, maybe it's once a year you have a kickoff, at the beginning of the year after appointments, just to kind of get a meeting of the minds. And maybe it's not a four-hour shindig like we, we had with the, over at Jordan's. But even if it were just a couple of hours to kind of go through priorities, and how we work together, and, hi, how are you doing? I think it's huge.
I would just say that I think, you know, the kickoff's great. I, I would assume for the next eight to ten weeks, would be tough to get two people from each board and in a room on a given night.
I do think the fall, you know-
The summer's probably not ideal.
October might be the right time.
Yeah. Yeah, September, October's probably, you know, more appropriate time to get higher attendance.
I'd be happy with, you know, would ask for two, and if the whole board, if other members feel so motivated, I'd be happy to entertain them. We'd have to pick a venue that's appropriately sized and maybe get a head count, so we can assure that.
Bill Brown's house, did you say?
What's the sense of the board, is it?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense.
I think it's a very good idea, and I think you should really, I don't know that you're able to mandate to, but I think you need two points of view to report back to everybody else, you know, if it's going to be effective. And I think that's the way it needs to be explained. I like the idea of opening it to everyone that would like to come.
And nobody feels left out if they're going to want to.
Yes. And if we can give notice this far in advance, you know, I think, it's hard to say if you didn't have enough advanced notice.
Yep. So, Bob, is, I think the sense of the board, I'm sorry, question?
I, I would also then just suggest that over the next couple of months, we as a group, or subsets of us, work on some kind of communication package to send out to them in advance of it. A few weeks in advance is fine, it doesn't have to be two months.
A work package.
But just give them something to think about as to, this is why you're coming.
And I would recommend that we coordinate with the schools in town and what's going on with, like, so we don't pick a night that's like a PTO, you know.
Father-daughter dance.
Father-daughter dance, you know, it's the open classroom, everybody, all the parents are playing that kind of thing.
There's always a lot of things going on.
Just going to say, there's no such day.
Yeah, yeah, but it probably isn't.
But you want to make sure you don't hit the big, the big ones, obviously, so.
So, I guess the sense of the board, Bob, is two, or as many as would like.
Okay.
And we'll send out a notice in a couple of weeks in advance, so that it puts incumbent on us of what's in that package.
Yes.
So, you could potentially have a hundred people.
I guess that's one reason you want to, most of RSVPs, so you don't, you have a-
So, you can pick the right venue.
Yeah. I would think maybe, you know, the schools, I mean, how many people were at that World Cafe?
I didn't go, so I don't know.
I want to say, I'm trying to think how many might have been there. I think it was probably a lot more than a hundred. It was probably more like two hundred and fifty, maybe. Pardon me?
Does that sound like a school?
Well, graduation has a few hundreds, so.
Graduation has, yeah.
Certainly can fit it.
Oh, the field house holds. Oh, the field house holds. Massive amounts.
Yeah. And that's probably a good location, which is another logistical issue, when is it not used?
Well, you know, the cafeteria at the high school's another one that would easily hold, you know, 100-plus people, and.
Yeah, I think you want more the flat space, not the auditorium, you want people to be able to.
Yes. Yeah, not the auditorium, I'm saying the cafeteria.
Right, right, right.
Where people can actually, you know, mill around tables, and can actually, you know, take some notes.
Parker Room upstairs is where they won't talk.
Yeah. That's, I, I don't remember the year, but I'm sure Bill will remember, sometime in the last 15 years, there was a similar meeting at Parker, between School Committee, Finance Committee trustees, and, and Selectmen, and then others. And I believe it was Fred Van Magnus was overseeing, and one thing Fred did, which I thought was extremely effective, was he refused to let any board members sit together, you had to mix.
Yeah.
So I hate that stuff when you go to this. In this case, people were sitting with each other, they didn't know each other, and all of a sudden they got to know each other, and they got to talking about each other, and as common issues for the whole community were discussed, it wasn't the FinCom sitting in one corner, and the Selectmen in another.
Right.
And all of a sudden, relationships were formed that day. So, you know, the other thing we'll think about is, do we want to have a moderator of some sort, and have a more professional job? We'll talk about that.
Good.
Okay, thanks.
I'll try to make it pretty intuitive.
Yeah, I'm sure he'd come.
Next, we have the topic of the, of the Charter Committee, which, in your electronic packet, was a marked-up copy of the notes to date, and on the 30th of June, Bob and I will meet with that group formally, but tonight we wanted to get the Board's input to that body of work already. Bob's got it up on the screen.
And I have it behind me, if there's any one section anyone wants to jump through, I know it's a lot there.
I, I did have one, just to maybe foster some conversation, one of the, one of the tasks of this Board, obviously, is appointing, or, or confirming the appointment of volunteers. And it struck me, although it's unusual and unfortunate when it happens, there is no vehicle that I can identify for removing an individual, and, and again, as infrequent as that is, it seems to me that, that it's infrequent shouldn't mean that it's not defined. And it is a, it's an opportunity to just clarify how that's done, I guess it's been done in the past infrequently, maybe not done very well. And it's just an example of, of an omission, I think, that's not in the document at the moment, that, that ought to be comprehended, and it's.
You're talking about removing them from a committee?
Correct.
An appointed committee.
Yeah, correct.
Because there is a method for town meeting members, they do it all the time.
If you're not, if you're not there.
Yeah.
If you don't attend, but I'm talking about.
And there is a method for elective boards, commissions, committees.
I'm just using that as an example, that's an example that.
That is an omission, you're right.
Right.
I, I have a fundamental question before we start, I'm not sure about the scope of changes for a committee versus a commission, I think that we've had a lot of discussion.
We have two different viewpoints in the room.
Have we run that by Town Council, and gotten some definitive?
I've got Ray Wright on speed dial now.
All right.
24/7.
24/7.
What's your question, Ian?
Scope.
Well, we've heard conflicting views of a committee versus a commission, there's divergent views.
They both are legal.
We know that.
Yes, and both can do exactly the same.
That I'm not so sure about.
Well, you know, actually, it's interesting, our Newtown Council led us down that path, that that was.
Do you agree?
No, no, I'm just saying to you, I mean, in his interview, which I saw yet again today, that, kind of that question came up, and he kind of went down that path, that thought that you didn't need to convene something, that one didn't necessarily trump the other, was, you know, was, was something he alluded to.
That was the Charter Committee versus Commission question.
Yeah, and then, and then it kind of went away in the course of that discussion, so it'll be interesting to hear.
Okay, I'd like to comment on that, if I may.
Hang on, Laura, so part of that same discussion, as I recall, Marcy, you were chatting about the 1928 reference, and I think Mr. Miar has also commented that, the whole spirit of this is if you need to change it, you change it, you're not waiting for some epic event.
Right, right, mhm, yeah, if, if you've already got a group together, you make the change.
Right, that was the discussion, thank you. Sorry, Laura.
I just wanted to comment that the committee versus a commission, a committee cannot change the form of government in which the town is run, so anything that has to do with.
The removal of elected boards, that sort of thing.
Appointing versus selecting?
Certain elected.
Elected, certain elected boards, that.
There's an elected board that you wanted to change to an appointed board, you're saying you couldn't do that.
A commit, a, a committee cannot. Anything that has to do with the form of government has to be done by a commission.
I thought a committee could only not change the format of certain elected boards, not all elected.
Well, that's why we need some.
So, so I would say that this is a fabulous thing to discuss with our Newtown Council, and to really, it doesn't, doesn't, that's a.
I don't know what comments I should have tonight.
I would, I would imagine every comment is possible, and let's go from there.
Let's go along the.
Let Town Council say no.
Versus, committee versus commission, is also the question of the Economic Development Committee versus the Economic Development Commission.
Sorry, if you could just stand and introduce yourself, for those of us.
Hi, Russell, Presiding of the debate, no, member of the Charter. I think you're speaking about committee versus commission.
Correct.
There's also been talk about the Economic Development Committee versus the Economic Development Commission, and what they can or cannot do. We have an Economic Development Committee right now, other towns have an Economic Development Commission, I'm not sure what the difference is, and I think it's something that needs to be talked about, because it's obviously becoming a very active committee in this town.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
John, Massachusetts, by Massachusetts Constitution, there are four things that must be elected, must have a legislative party, which is town meeting, you must have a Board of Selectmen, which is there, you must have an elected school committee, and you must elect a moderator, anything else, you can be appointed, and this committee can do it, despite what my colleague says.
I need to chat.
We have exactly the same power as a Charter Commission, it is a different route through the state legislatures, and if you go back and look at all the amendments that have been made to the Charter to date, they have gone through as a home rule petition, and not as a Charter review. And the state legislature, and the state legislature alone decides whether it shall come back to the voters or not, and that's right in the law, you can read.
Wasn't the intent of the committee to bring minor changes to the legislature, so it didn't have to go to the voters? I thought that was the purpose. Isn't that the purpose?
Oh, is that Dan, excuse me?
That was the purpose, yes.
The purpose of the committee is to not have to bother the voters in town, anybody, just bringing these minor changes to the legislature. Why would you want the legislature to make major changes without going to the voters?
The legislature tends, say, you must bring it to the voters, they do not have to.
For whom? The committee?
Yes. Any recommendations this committee makes to the legislature, they could say, okay, it's drastic enough, we want you to bring it to the voters.
Okay.
You do not have to. If they decide it's minor changes, dot and i's, cross and t's, they could say, no, you do not have to.
That's the element I hadn't heard before.
You can mandate that it's not.
I, I would just like to say one thing, we're all here, Alan, Bill, Glenn, and myself, as individual members of the commission, none of us are representing the commission.
Sure.
So anything that we say, we're strictly speaking as individuals, okay? Not for the committee.
Thank you. Bobby, do you have a question?
Just to follow on Dan's point, maybe it's obvious, but the legislature can't forbid you from bringing, taking things to the voters, that's always right up the line.
I just wanted to clarify, because this has been a discussion that's been going back and forth the entire time the committee's been in existence, and it's been said that I have stated that it needs to go to the voters, and that's true, because of the fact that it's actually in the Charter, that it states if there's any changes made to the Charter, that it needs to go to the voters. It's part of our Charter, so that's been my belief, and supported by the state. I'm sorry?
That'll be the first change.
I think as a practical matter, besides collecting comments, this one question's got to get resolved and ironed out, otherwise we're just.
Yeah, it's a legal question, it'll be resolved, I think you should treat it as open season on any change you want, and let someone else say no.
Any other comments from the Board, besides standing right?
Are we looking for specific comments? Because I, I have some very specific comments, and just in, in, starting to read through it, there were some, some things that I had, some major things I had concerns with, there, it appears that, that the Board of Selectmen can't, can't appoint a standing committee any longer, which seemed, or I guess that may have gotten pushed to the back, is that true? So there, there's a place where it said.
Page, or section number?
Let's see.
Other committees?
Right here, maybe, the Board of Selectmen may establish and appoint standing advisory committees.
It's page 12.
On page 12, so that might have got relocated.
Actually, I can't remember that I saw it again.
Unfortunately, you can't search this document.
You also can't print this document.
I don't know if it's page, page 17.
Try printing it, it got all black, so it didn't help me any of, yeah, the printer that I was using just printed black.
Did you say you can't search the document?
No, the little left doesn't work.
I'll fix that up.
Yeah, I don't see that. Was that done away with, Bill? What was the rationale, if anybody wants to take that on, the, the standing boards pointed by the Selectmen?
Yeah. There are several definitions that the committee has requested that we go to Town Council on, and one of them was standing committees, what does that term actually mean?
Irrespective of the meaning of it, the proposed change actually removes the ability to do it, I understand it turns on the definition, but presumably it was defined at the time of its review.
So now it's just gone?
Now it's just gone because of definitions?
We moved, we moved that. We moved it.
It's under 812.
It's under other committees on 17, but it, it doesn't jump out at me exactly, unless it's this, is it this red section here?
Page 17.
Any of the elected boards, is it that new paragraph, new paragraph, in red?
Any of the elected boards, so it actually broadens it.
Broadens it.
So, page 17, did you say?
Yeah, four.
Yeah, I see it.
So I'm actually concerned about us allowing, we appoint a board, and then we allow another board to appoint a board, and if you think we have silos now, we could potentially have much larger silos, more silos. I, I actually don't think that we want to randomly allow people to set up standing committees. I believe ad hoc committees for very specific purposes makes a lot of sense, and allowing other boards to do that, but standing committees concerns me, because I think that leads to potential inefficiencies.
Well, you know, what it does is it leads you to gridlock.
Right.
Nothing gets done when you do that.
That's a pretty broad, pretty broad, wide broadening of the original intent, from the Selectmen can do it, to any group can do it.
Hmm.
Any elected group. Any elected group. What was the intent there?
I think if, and remember, I think, like, the light department, they have committees, if they could put up a standing committee, they should.
And I can tell you that, that, that I have an opinion in terms of how efficient those are.
Well, you're on.
Because the same issue then, it needs to get rehashed, again, with the full committee.
My, having only been in this chair for a very short time, but having been in that chair for 25 years, you know, there's a lot of kick of the can down the road when you start appointing committees.
Yeah.
That's one of the ways that you make it just disappear, is you appoint a committee, and it finds its way into oblivion.
Paralysis by analysis.
It's also another way to really, to hide things that should be discussed in a public forum, so you still have a public meeting, but now it's got a, a subcommittee, and so it's not publicized, and it's.
Who knows, I mean, I know it's posted, but.
Who knows what's happening.
Yeah.
Right. I, I'm not in favor of it.
You know, I was on one of those committees that met at 7:00 in the morning. Now, I mean, really? Was that welcoming the public? You know, I, I just think that we've got to be very careful on that specific topic, about how you do that, that's just, that's my opinion.
What, what vehicle or format will these comments be reviewed or internalized or incorporated?
Well, this will come back to the committee, plus we will have an open forum for everybody as well, we'll review any, any comments, but just, just keep it back to like leading the discussion.
Would it be helpful, Alan, if we brought it in writing, meaning, meaning Paul is taking good notes right now?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine, I, I made notes, but that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Paula.
Any other comments by the Board? I presume that they'll, as you continue to review this, you may have other notes that come in an email form.
Yeah, I, what I'll, I think I'll do is I'll send, I'll send my comments in writing, but because I didn't have a chance to, to get them in writing, I was just kind of jotting things down as I reviewed, but there was another change in here where, there's a change from 28 to 35 days prior to an election, that somebody would do something, that's in 2-6. 2-5, you can only pick up those things in person, I don't understand why that was changed, maybe, you know, it wasn't, wasn't like that before.
That was changed to meet state law.
Okay. So, it, it looked like oath of office was taken out in 2-6, but maybe it got moved to someplace?
No, it just now was taken out.
What?
It got taken out. By, by law, townee members do not have taken off office, I'll tell you who we instigated with that.
It's always been a tradition in running, but it's not law.
I think we have some of those.
And the town clerk pointed it up to very nicely, and refused to hold precinct meeting because we didn't have people that were sworn in yet.
Is the provenance of these edits known? I mean, you guys are doing it live here off the top of your head, but presumably, if you're not around, they'll want to know, well, how was that, well, that's a state law, well, how was that, well, that's, that comes from over here. Is it documented where the source of these edits, or the logic behind them is?
Some of it's in the minutes, yeah.
Right, but, you know, in here, in the, in the mini notes or the margins, you might say, just very tersely, state law, or will of the committee, or something that gives the reader some sense of where it originates from. I mean, subjecting somebody to read the minutes is going to take longer than reading the document.
Hmm.
Just a thought.
Maybe a series of footnotes.
Yeah, footnotes would work, very well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were some, there were some other, other comments that I had on this, where it just, section 2-3 and 2-6, it appeared that there was language that talked about membership and vacancy, and I would have expected those to be consistent, but it looked like there was only, there was a, they were not quite consistent, just in a quick reading.
You'll do a cut and paste so that the readers can understand exactly what you mean?
Yeah. Ed?
There was a question. All right.
I don't have the verbiage, John, of support, which you were talking about, but I certainly would support some sort of a process, probably by the Board of Selectmen, to remove for cause members of appointed boards, committees, commissions.
If, for no other reason than to make them, to make it clear that there's both an on-ramp and an off-ramp, and ones are used a whole lot more than the other.
The bar should be high for that.
Yeah.
The bar should be high.
So that's actually an added addition to this, I guess I'll throw that in an email as well with my notes. Any other comments?
I, just, I'm sorry, I made the comment about that last night as well, I thought that ought to be brought up. Removing the clause.
Removing the cause.
And presumably that would comprehend any legal, statutory, or obligatory.
How do you define cause?
Well, it could be the legal.
Yeah.
That's why we've hired a town council.
There is a paragraph somewhere.
There probably is a paragraph somewhere that you just...
I can answer some of Bill's questions. In other towns, attendance, lack of attendance, obviously, is cause. That's the simple.
We can put that in.
I believe that's in the announcement.
John? So I just, I don't know if it's a comment or a couple of questions that I have. Are you guys, you guys are a public committee, right? Are you in session? Do you have a call?
There's a huge amount of them.
Okay, so, you know, that was just my first procedural question.
Yes, of course.
Yes.
And legally, we are a committee at town meeting and we're not subject to the open meeting laws, although my instructions may have made it subject to open laws.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I guess the question I have is all, just a general question for all of you, is as you're moving forward, are you believing Laura's interpretation or Bill's as you decide what you're going to speak about in the meeting? Because one makes you stay away from certain things, and the other one says everything's open season. So I'm wondering what the, and I guess maybe I ask you that, Alan.
Well, let me back just a little bit, just to slightly correct Bill. There are a few things that this board cannot do, and that's make any change, and this is by Article eighty-nine of the state constitution, any change in a charter relating in any way to the composition, mode of election or appointment, or terms of office of the legislative body, or the board of selectmen, or the town manager, shall be made only by the procedure of the charter revision set forth in section three, which is the charter condition.
So that sounds like, that sounds like what you just said.
Yes. Those are the exceptions to that. Other than that, we can pretty much offer anything to town meeting, that would go to the state to decide whether it's big enough or not to have a town vote. For the most part, we've been making relatively minor changes. There are a few things that could be controversial. We intend eventually to split out anything that we think is not just a routine change to have that vote on separately, so people can vote for most of it against a specific candidate.
Marcy Sharp Eyes found another topic that's near and dear to my heart. On page eleven, the subject matter related to the circulator of a referendum petition, some of the language that was voted by town meeting appears to have been struck?
No, it hasn't gone to voters.
May I?
Sure.
The, what we did is the first call, the one in Brown, the first paragraph is the wording that you, that was passed by town meeting that you had proposed. The second paragraph is the wording that the committee kind of talked about with the idea that they wanted to discuss it with you when you come in on the thirtieth.
But this, this would seem to say it's already been edited and stricken with a single strikeout, not merely discussed. It's fine to put a footnote that says open for discussion or see, John, but this says, B is gone.
Yeah. I mean, it was done that way so that we would remember.
I might, I might suggest there are other ways to, doing it this way is subject to misinterpreting what the intent was. I might suggest you just put a footnote.
Well, it is a draft, so I'll just...
I don't know why we would strike in the electronic version by email. That does not make really a lot of sense to me.
What was the reason to open that, leave that open for the...
The discussion, because by Massachusetts general law, when you pass around a petition for signatures, there's a front side and a backside. It, if it doesn't, if it's not printed two-sided, it cannot be accepted. The conversation or discussion was, is if it's provided via email and the user doesn't print it as double-sided, then their work is, you know, null and void, and the signatures can't be accepted. So that was the conversation that was going on within the committee of trying to decide, should it be provided to them in paper format, double-sided?
If that's true, then the whole body above it should be edited, which allows users to make their own, because nowhere does it say it has to be a double-sided form. It only says that it has to have certain text. Only because I went through this over and over and over and over again, am I saying this.
We did talk about this, we finally, we may put the discussion off until next meeting. But there is, I guess, a set of instructions that goes with this, is that correct?
That's correct.
That would explain that.
But this allows, this original language allows the user to craft his own out of a blank sheet of paper, for which no instructions would be available in that case. That's the part that would seem to know.
And the electronic version could be sent out with big, huge caps that say, must be printed double-sided or will not qualify, and that pretty much takes care of it, you know?
It's just, in this day and age, it seems like electronic, we better anticipate. I don't have a good answer for your, maybe Marcy's suggestion of notes would do it, or maybe in Adobe, there's a way to designate that it's got to be double-sided, but mandating somebody walk into the town clerk in this day and age, I mean, I'm sending electronic documents every, we'll come in and talk about it, but it's... Any other comments from the board? All right. I'd urge you all to read this, make your notes on email, and copy, who's the chair of the board? Copy Alan.
Um, can I?
Sure.
Comment on one thing, and then also request, I'd like to be copied on that as well.
Okay.
The other is that there was a document that is provided by the state for all state petitions, referendum and ballot questions, that I had provided to the committee. I'd be more than happy to provide that to you as well beforehand, if you'd like.
I have it already, that's how we drafted this.
Okay.
But thank you for the offer. Okay, any other questions or comments? Bob?
I just want to reflect that there was one change voted and suggested by the finance committee that is in this draft. The finance committee has three-year, three-term limits, nine years, three terms, whatever. And if I find it, I'll show you. Here it is. It allows for a partial term to not count against your term limit. As a recent example, Barry Berman is term limited out even though he hasn't done nine years because he's done two full three-year terms and a partial first term. So by the charter and by the practice we've engaged, we can't reappoint him for three years, which is his term, so he's not eligible for anything.
If we pass this, we can draft...
If we pass this, we can go call on Barry and say we have an open to do over. But the other part about the term limit, whether you're for or against term limits, I'm not really sure if this is a legal question or a practical one, but members in the past, not Barry, have suggested resigning a day in advance and then being reappointed. And that's not within the spirit of probably what the charter said, but would be within the legality of what the charter says.
Yeah, maybe the term should be sharpened so that the partial term is the start of a partial term, not the ending of a term, that's partial.
Certainly, the appointing committee can take that into consideration.
Certainly.
We actually modified Barry's, just a little bit. We said anything less than two years.
Two years? Yeah. All right, well, I'm sure it'll be a spirited conversation, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next we have approval of minutes.
I thought they were all volunteer committee minutes.
No minutes.
No, I thought it was some...
We'll have a quick meeting and approve our minutes tonight. We approved our two meetings minutes. Be a few minor changes.
All right. That being the case, we have a motion to move to executive session.
Do the board of selectmen go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to discuss strategy with respect to purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property? Should we have verbiage saying, the chair having determined that a public discussion would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the town, not to come back until a concession?
I have a second?
Second.
Marcy's seconds. This is a roll call vote. John Holsey?
Yes.
Dan Ensminger?
Yes.
John O'Rainy, yes. Marcy West?
Yes.
Kevin Sexton?
Yes.
We are adjourned.